We're ready. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for Monday, August 10, 2020. Mr. Berman, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Here.
Mr. Oliva.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
And Mr. Wexler.
Here. Will all please rise for the Pleasure of Allegiance led by our Deputy Chief of Police. First order of business is the township auditor. Is he remote?
I think he's on the way in.
Okay. Are there any commissioner committee updates while we're waiting for the auditor?
Just the Brooklyn School Ad-Hoc Committee will be meeting again August 31 at 7:00. Anyone who's interested in attending, please email me at ghart@haverfordtownship.org. Again, this is not anything to do with the library. We're looking at potential other uses for the building should the library not move there and we not decide to demolish it and turn it into a park.
Okay, great. Any other committee updates? There being none, we'll go to the township auditor update who just... Put him right on the spot since he just walked in.
Hope you didn't bike.
I walked.
You walked, okay.
Little hat in the suit, but it's not that long. I've audited or I've reviewed the expenditures and warrants for this meeting. I found no irregularities and no questions were answered to my satisfaction.
Thank you. Any questions of the township auditor? Next item is we'll move on to the citizens forum. We have several written comments under our format. I'll read them. First is from Denise Dooner. "The recent Cobb's Creek flooding crested within one-half inch of my son's first-floor door, Gregory Dooner, at 2449 Winfield Drive. His house was surrounded by floodwater, garage three foot deep, basement one foot deep. Video on Facebook showed the NHSL undergrade bridge culvert at at least 95% full with storm water located near the swim club. Water was splashing into the bridge above it. Not sure if the water reached even higher levels during the flood. The bridge culvert needs to be replaced and enlarged along with the man-made creek channel by the swim club and Caricon Road Bridge. One possible reason for flooding is that these water flow restrictions are causing the creek water upstream to excessively rise at the same time additional storm water is coming downstream. Please partner with SEPTA, Delaware County Planning Commission, and the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to advance a stormwater management engineering study to find workable short- and long-term solution." Thanks, John and Denise Dooner, 2130 Haverford Road, Artmore, Pennsylvania. Our second comment is, "Dear Haverford Commissioners, my name is Matt Shields. My wife, our three-week-old son, and I are residents of Winfield Drive. I am writing to you today to ask what the township will be doing to support the residents of Winfield Drive and what plans can be made to mitigate flooding in the future. We purchased our home in September 2018 and have now been through two 100-year floods in our time as homeowners. We love being Haverford Township residents and want to stay, but having severe flooding event every once every year is unacceptable. After last year's storm, we took preparation seriously. Our drains were clean, debris and yard waste were removed to prevent any clogging of the drains, and it was still not enough. We ended up with 43 inches of water in our basement this time. There has to be more that the township can do for the 30-plus families who are devastated by this flooding over and over again. Are there any federal or state grants available for flood mitigation? Can the creek be widened or deepened? Haverford College had to install a large reservoir under their new turf field to collect runoff. Can something like that be done in Merwood Park? Again, we love Haverford Town and want to continue living here and raising the next generation of Haverford Town residents, but we can't do that without something being done." Next one is from John and Curry Goans, 2443 Winfield Drive. "We would like to ask the board about possible repairs to be made for the water management construction located behind Winfield Drive. Specifically, one, can a service team unplug and then mend the drain pipes? Parts of the water management system behind numbers 2443 and 2445 are blocked and damaged. I am unsure if there are other residents experiencing the same problem. This request was made last year at the township meeting offered for Winfield Drive. Number two, can a service team repair the 'curb' that was constructed? There's approximately 10 feet 5 inches crack, a 10-foot 5-inch crack in the curb behind number 2443. Number three, can a service team inspect the diagonal concrete rise from the creek? It is possible that the rise is pushed out toward the water due to poor drainage behind the concrete wall. This is in respect to what is behind numbers 2443 and 2445. Number four, can our township commissioners consider the possibility of adding height to our curb or actively look into a way to control some of the overflow? The current height of the curb on Winfield Drive is approximately eight inches. Thank you again for offering this opportunity to reach out to the township commissioners. We are looking forward to positive and productive steps being taken to help the residents of Winfield Drive. Sincerely, John and Curry Goans." Dear Commissioners, thank you for all you do. Last Wednesday, 401, 403, 405, and 407 Twin Oaks Drive properties all experienced basement flooding due to the accumulated stormwater runoff from the properties located between Pine Ridge and Whipford Drives, which are at a higher elevation and have deeper backyards with areas farther away from houses than the Twin Oaks Drive properties. Can the township assist these Twin Oaks residents with some kind of communal stormwater mitigation? Sincerely, Kaylee Carpenter. Next one, "My name is Megan Kahn. I live at 329 Spring Road in Haverford Town. We moved into our home November 2019 and experienced the first flooding of our street this past week as a result of the hurricane. I've attached a few pictures. My neighbor sits a couple feet lower than my home and had water on her front porch pretty much entering her living room. My home sits directly across from the empty lot where the garden is planted. I assume our street would be one of the streets in Chatham Glen that would be a part of the stormwater management plan. If the plan is approved, when approximately would work begin? Thank you, Megan Kahn." Our last comment is, "Can the commissioners investigate less expensive printing options for our newsletter or give residents the ability to opt out of the printed version? I used to be in the printing business. I know this is expensive high-gloss paper that is currently used, and I think we could reduce our postal costs if residents could make the choice to receive it electronically." I'll answer that one first. This is a copy.
Bill, I'm sorry. I have some residents from Virginia that sent me the comments rather than send them to you. I don't know if they sent them to you.
I didn't see anything that said public comment. I did receive some...I don't think I have it in the public comment category.
Would you mind, Bill, if I read it?
No, go right ahead. Let me answer this one first, though.
Go ahead.
This is a copy of the magazine that was distributed and mailed to the township in the last two weeks. This is not a township publication. This is published by Franklin Maps out of Valley Forge. It's an advertising sales revenue book. It is on high-gloss material. It is not from the township. As you can see, if you look through it, it is replete with ads. We are taking action. We're notifying all the advertisers that this is not an official township publication. They're free to do it. It's not illegal. But just be advised that this is an advertising book. Our official...we do have an official newsletter that comes out three times a year, and we do give residents the option to receive that as an email to save our printing cost. And we welcome those that do that, sign up on our township website to get it via email as opposed to print a copy to reduce our cost. But the publication that came out in the last two weeks was from an advertising firm. It's not illegal. In fact, it's actually not a bad thing. Everything that's in there regarding the township is public domain. It's on our website. So everything was taken off the website. So it's a perfectly legal magazine, but it's not an official publication of the township. So that thing did not cost the taxpayers any money at all. But please go on our website and look at our township and sign up for our newsletter updates in our township website. We have a constant contact contract. You'll be added to there. We can then also segregate you by ward so that the commissioners can send you directed emails by ward as well, so...
Can I add one thing?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
I think there's confusion because Franklin Maps used to do our newsletter, and it came in this very format. So I think people are confused and think this is the official township newsletter, when in fact it's not. We made a decision as a township to do it in-house, which we're doing currently, and as our president said, we're doing it three times a year. And so look for something...you've gotten it in the past, and you'll get...when is the next one coming out, Amy?
First week of September.
First week of September. So it's all in-house, and the reason we did was we wanted to take away some of this...all the advertising. It just became an advertising publication. So we wanted to make it more informative for the public and not so much advertising. And we're doing it in-house, I think, cheaper, right?
Yes. That was the whole purpose.
So I just wanted to just add that. Thanks. Thanks, Bill.
Commissioner Demilio, go ahead and read your comments from your constituent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. "Dear Commissioners, this is from Scott Emirio McKellon. They live at 307 Virginia. Dear Commissioners, Scott and I have lived in our home for 20 years. We love our home and our community. With this last storm that came through last week, we have sustained so much damage from the sewer that forced itself into our basement. The damage is significant, and because it was sewage, our insurance will not cover it. We would like to know if the township is addressing this problem, which is widespread throughout the township. Our questions to the commissioners is what is this township going...what is this township doing to address this? When was the last time the sewer was checked on Virginia Avenue? With all the new development in the township, can the sewers handle the added stress? We understand the township is ready to spend millions on a new library. We're not against a new library, but we think the infrastructure in the township should be a high priority if the township wants to keep their longtime residents. We can't begin to tell you the worry this causes us. My seven grandsons love to play in our basement. Now knowing it was full of sewage is unacceptable. They have sent pictures of their basement to Steve, Demilio, and me, and would love to share with everyone." I think I...did I send them to you, Dave?
I'm aware of that situation, but I am not...I don't think I have any photos of those circumstances.
I think I have another one. Just give me a second. I'm sorry.
All right. Is that the end of the comments, or?
Well, that's the end of her comment. I'm trying...I thought there was another one. Yes, there is. This is from Michael Layden on 321 Virginia Avenue. "Just reaching out because, as you know, our street got hit with an overflow of sewage. My parents have had a house on the street for 59 years, and the only two times sewage backed up was when the storm took the building material from the new house on Upland and clogged the sewer drains in 2002. And this time, when the contractors for the water company's barriers blocked the drains." So what happened, what he's saying is that the water company was working there, and I think the...what was it that floated into the sewer line?
I believe he thought the cones were blocking the storm sewer inlets.
We need help in this matter, so they're asking for help.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, we've had significant flooding event this past week. You know, not only water in basements that haven't had them before and some that have had extensive water. Nature can be cruel, but at this time, we're studying what we can do to Winfield Drive. There's a lot of different alternatives. I'll ask Mr. Berman if he wants to comment, and Mr. Penoni's here if you need him as well.
Can we...so we can discuss this a bit, Bill?
Well, we're going to answer the comments, then we can discuss in a work session any long-term solutions that you want to.
First, Mr. Demilio, I want to apologize. I didn't see that first public comment that you read, so I apologize for that. Certainly, I'm aware of the situation on Virginia Drive, and yes, there are dozens of homes that reported sewer backups, a lot of stormwater, and also some sanitary sewer backups. And I have been in contact with Penoni about that to discuss ways to reduce that inflow and infiltration of clear water into the sanitary sewer system. So that's two separate systems. Stormwater is where the inlets are. Sanitary is where the toilet water goes, for lack of a better term. And those systems are separate, but we know that when there are heavy rain events, like eight-and-a-half inches of rain over the course of 24 hours, we're going to have inflow and infiltration from stormwater into the sanitary system. And so we are going to begin...we have been working with Penoni, our engineering firm, to talk about ways that we can reduce that inflow and infiltration problem. Some of it is problems or imperfections or deficiencies with the pipes underground, and some of it is perhaps illegal connections such as sump pumps or downspouts that are connected directly into the sanitary sewer system. All of them are problems, and so we're going to look at that in a more methodical manner going forward.
So do we know when the last time the sewer lines were inspected along Virginia and Maryland? Do we have any idea?
I don't have that information with me, but we do have the data, and I can let you know.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, can I ask Dave Penoni a question, Bill? Was that okay?
Well, we can do that under other business. We get through the agenda, since this is a citizens forum and not really a discussion forum.
Okay. Okay, I can do it under other business.
Yeah, we'll do it...we can reopen it under the open session. Our next item is Amy Moskowitz informing us of upcoming library events. And she is...
Hold on one second, Amy. You're muted.
Zoomed.
Just give me one second on that. All right, let's try it again, Amy.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm here tonight to invite all of the commissioners and members of the community back to the library. We are now allowing patrons into the library Monday through Saturday to browse and use the computers. Also, our Home Express delivery service for homebound patrons has resumed. Our Grab and Go service offers patrons the opportunity to enter the library, choose materials, and check out. We have new books, museum passes, postbox, e-readers, Roku, laptops, and more. For health and safety reasons, patrons will notice several changes in our operations. The first hour from 10 to 11 Monday through Saturday is reserved for seniors and patrons with compromised immune systems. To accommodate for social distancing, fewer people are permitted in the building at a time. Masks must be worn at all times when in the library. If you don't have one, the library will happily provide one for you. All programs will continue virtually, and no in-house programs will take place. All meeting rooms are closed. Most chairs have been removed, and one person is permitted in an aisle at a time. Four of the nine public computers are in operation, and computer use is limited to a 40-minute session. Free registration is encouraged for the computers, and staff are not able to provide in-person computer assistance in keeping with social distancing guidelines. Miss our program? We're taking them out of the library and outdoors this August. All events will be held in Merwood Park. Space is limited, and registration is required. We are also requiring masks and social distancing. Don't miss our first in-person library event this Thursday, August 13 at 2:00 P.M. Library afternoon in the park will feature a storytime, books to browse and check out, and a drum circle with a professional instructor. This event is co-sponsored by Kelly Music Center. If this event is full, don't worry, we plan on having similar events in the future. On Tuesday, August 18 at 10:30 a.m., we will be having a book share. A reference librarian will lead a lively discussion among participants about our favorite books that we've been reading. You'll leave with new ideas of favorite books to check out, new friends, and a renewed interest in reading. On Thursday, August 27 at 10:30 a.m., join us for music and art in the park. We will supply all of the materials for you to make works of art based on listening to pieces of classical music. Get inspired and get creative. Thank you for listening and letting me share all that the library has to offer. We look forward to seeing you in the library and at our upcoming event."
Amy, thank you very much for that update. We appreciate all the hard work you and the staff and everybody over there has been doing during this pandemic. Very much appreciate it. I'm glad people can get back in now.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is township manager's update.
Well, much of my update has to do with the tropical storm that came through last week, and I was just going to give you some numbers and statistics, but when I talk about numbers and statistics, I have to tell you, everyone has a story, and many of those residents, like Virginia Avenue, Winfield Drive, Twin Oaks, have called the township, and we've tried to speak with as many of them as we could. We know some of these situations can be life-changing. There's been some sewage in basements. There's been stormwater that's overwhelmed some of the homes. The day of the storm, the police department, the Bureau of Fire, Public Works responded to hundreds of calls, literally hundreds of calls, for help. Fallen trees, trees and wires on fire, trees in houses, just horrible scenes in all different areas of the township. We did have the flooding. We did have some sewer backups. We did have some boat rescues, particularly on Winfield Drive, but elsewhere, too. And there was one working structure fire that was caused by...related to the storm. We didn't have any injuries reported by EMS that day. So we have the residents, they're experiencing flooding in their homes, and we hope that they've already reported this in the case of Virginia Drive. We know they've reported to their insurance company. The cleaning and the sanitizing should already be taking place. It should be well underway, if not complete, by now. Some residents who have reported to us, we've kept the list, and we have forwarded that information to our insurance carrier. If you haven't reported it yet, feel free to do so. You can call the township phone number or email Public Works. 610-446-1000 is the number, and you can dial 2264 or 2263. That's Ron and Kim in Public Works, and they'll be glad to take your information and add it to the list. Unfortunately, the majority of those claims are the responsibility of the property owner. The township does have some level of immunity when it comes to sanitary sewer and stormwater backups and flooding in homes, and therefore, we're unable to identify one that we can take care of and others that we would be unable to take care of. And that's why I take the entire list, and I give it to our insurance agent so that they can take a look at that for us and, if necessary, address it. PICO has been an issue as well. We know that many had power outages that lasted up to a day during this storm. I was actually frankly quite surprised that PICO was able to restore power to so many residents so quickly. I know it didn't seem quick for those of you who didn't have power, but the reality is, they did a pretty good job this storm compared to some of the other storms that we've experienced. I did invite a representative of PICO to speak with the board at an upcoming meeting. Perhaps we can have PICO participate via Zoom and answer your questions directly. I think that would be very helpful. We're aware that we have some problems left in the township. We know that the Darby Creek Trail is closed. There were two large trees that fell and some areas that were completely washed out where the asphalt completely washed away. And so we closed the trail to make sure that the residents were safe. We'll have to examine that and see what we can do going forward. There are a couple roads that remain closed. Glendale is closed at Westchester Pike. That's a state road. Both Westchester Pike and Glendale are state roads, and it's closed due to a sinkhole. That's a PennDOT issue. Manoa Road has a sinkhole. It's not closed, but there's a decent-sized sinkhole right near the Manoa Road Bridge, so we have PennDOT looking at that. It's blocked off with cones. And Caricon Drive is closed right above the Little League fields, and that's closed because there was a mudslide there, and there's a structure at the top of the hill that is potentially unstable and an abundance of caution. We closed the road in that vicinity. Folks can access the parking lot for the swim club and for the Little League fields by going through the Mill roadway. I said earlier, there were hundreds of calls. Our police officers, Public Works, Bureau of Fire, and the EMS personnel that were working that day ran their tails off. It was very impressive, and there are some risks associated with working in those conditions. And so we are very appreciative. We're very appreciative of Ron and Kim and Public Works. They took hundreds of calls that day and tried to help as many residents as they could. And our Public Works Director, Dan Mariani, and our Police Chief and our Mercy Management Coordinator, John Viola, the two of them are on a much-needed vacation this week. They're not with us this evening, but we appreciate the help that they gave us during the storm. You can imagine trying to be in two places at once. They were all over the place and helped as many residents as they could. So that's all I have for this evening. You know, we realized there was flooding, and we realized there were problems, and these are numbers that we're throwing out there, but we take it very seriously, and for what it's worth, we understand that everyone was affected in a really profound way, and we are sorry for that.
May I, Bill?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berman.
Bill, may I ask him a question?
Yeah.
Mr. Berman, Westchester Pike and Glendale, what's the ETA on that? Do you have any idea?
PennDOT has not given us an ETA. There's a problem with the stormwater sewer that runs under Glendale, and they have not told us what they're going to do to repair that, so we don't know what the timing is yet. I'll try to get that for you as soon as I can.
Okay. So if we don't know, what's happening is vehicles traveling towards Westchester Pike are not realizing, except if you're in Westgate Hills, you realize that everybody knows that it's closed, but coming from Bill's word, they don't know that. So can we put a sign up that indicates that Westchester Pike is closed, that Glendale, and some detour signs?
Yeah, we'll do both. We'll try to see what we can put out there tomorrow temporarily, but this...we're going to need some of those PennDOT signs because I'm not sure quite how long that's going to be. So as I say, we'll ask the police department and Public Works to get some signage, advanced signage out there temporarily, and then we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, and Glendale, we need advanced signage.
Yeah, you need it further down the hill.
Absolutely.
Yeah, of course.
Did they go there today or no? Were they there today at all?
I didn't see them out there today. Thank you.
Dave, could I ask you something else about Caricon Drive?
One second, Dan. I got one more question here, and then I'll field your question.
Further down Caricon, the creek eroded the bank, and the guardrail is kind of come loose along the drive. I just...is PennDOT going to address that?
How far down? Yes, we can give that to you.
So heading beyond where Nider Hall is, heading towards Manoa Road.
Oh, that far down?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a couple of spots, but there's one larger area where it's basically just kind of up in the air.
Yes, we will certainly have them look at that.
Thanks.
Mr. Wexler, Mr. Siegel had a question.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Berman, since you've already discussed it, I'll bring it up here rather than later in the meeting with PICO. There were a number of the outages in the fourth ward, Marilyn Park and Colfax and a couple areas that went for multiple days, three to four days in one instance. So...and it was obviously a major area of concern and comment to me. So I just want to make sure that's included because you set up to a day, and these were much more extensive and generated, you know, residents were rightfully upset and concerned. And in one area where there's been at least three of the same types of outages, I would say within the last three or four months.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll be sure to include that on my list for PICO.
Thank you.
Mr. Berman, is there any step we need to take as a board to declare any emergencies or do anything official that will create a situation where state or county or federal funds for people who were affected by these floods?
Mr. Holmes, that's a good question. The county did declare, from my understanding, they did declare a state of emergency, which would cover this municipality. would cover this municipality. We did report some of the damage assessment that we made today to the county. They're collecting that from all municipalities in the county, and if they reach a certain threshold, and I don't know what that is, the way it's worked in the past is if a county reaches a threshold, then Pima or FEMA would make grant funds available. And so I don't know what that threshold is. I don't have a lot of detail with regard to this storm. And when we've done this in the past, we've adopted those resolutions retroactively. I don't have one drafted for this evening. However, I can draft it for your next meeting if that becomes necessary.
I think we should.
Doesn't hurt to submit it, typically what we're told.
I mean, can we just take the action orally tonight? Is our solicitor online?
I can.
Oh, hi, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, whether we need to actually write something or whether we just, under
new business, can pass a resolution indicating we're declaring an emergency for those neighborhoods that were affected by the flood. Right.
And we could do that under new business.
I think we typically do it, your declaration, and the board signs it.
And the board ratifies it.
We've done it without board meeting a number of times to join the emergency. As soon as the county does, we've normally done ours as well.
Yes, sir.
So it would help with this, and I totally agree with Larry. It's a great, great idea to do what we can. But so it would help if we had more data, like from residents that were adversely affected by the storm. Is that correct? Is it better that they should be contacting you?
Mr. D'Amelio, if folks would like to report their damages, we'd be glad to take their information. I can't say how that's going to work itself out in terms of commitments and whether grant funds would be available, but if folks would like to report that information.
We could use that data, information.
Well, why don't we, we could put something out in the morning on Constant Contact and ask folks to report their damages for the purposes that we described.
Mr. Berman? Just to follow up on Commissioner Siegel's comment, in the 5th Ward, we also had a number of streets that were out for up to three or four days without power. And I was without power myself again for two days. Came back on Thursday. They told me to come back on Saturday, so I came back early. But we do have PICO come in to present to the board. I think we ought to ask them to look at the reliability of some of these circuits, because my circuit, I mean, I live on a circuit that seems to be continually without power, and I look across my neighbor's yard, and they're watching television. So I was out for five days in the prior storm, and this one I was out for two days. So I think we need to ask PICO to do some reliability studies. And what's unfortunate is that PICO understandably addresses first those circuits with the largest number of homes on it and gets them up and going, and goes down the line. If you're on a circuit with 12 homes, you're kind of last to have your problem fixed. But then also, again, you're also last in terms of having your line upgraded, because it's not a big circuit. So I think it's just kind of unfair, you know, it's unfair that you can't get proceeds to do the proper upgrades and restoration work. So I think when PICO comes in, we got to ask them, maybe you can ask them in advance, be prepared to talk about, you know, how they can study reliability and how they can provide better reliability and improve their infrastructure where they have, you know, more than one or two outings of the same homes in the course of a 12-month period, because it's clearly a problem in Commissioner Siegel's Ward and my Ward.
I'm sure you're not alone.
Probably other wards.
You're not alone.
You're not alone.
Can I add to that? Because in the 3rd Ward, 1st Ward, and in the 2nd Ward, whenever the wind blows sideways, we have an issue with power outages. I know that over near Washington, Lincoln, Oakland, all those streets there, they lose power. In the 3rd Ward, we're on the same circuit, on the Oakmont Circuit, and we lose power very frequently. So, you know, that's something that, as we're looking at this, we didn't lose power. I mean, we lost power over on Eagle Road, where the tree went down. Now, that was, you know, nature, so you really can't prevent that. But in that section, if we're going to talk to PICO, that should be one of the sections we look at, is the reliability, because that area, I mean, Arrow Garden Road, up high where our town pizza is, they lose power all the time. Toll court has seen Oakmont Circuit.
Understood, and the reliability will be studied, and I will pass these concerns along to PICO so that they're prepared to answer those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Next item is the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. D'Amelio.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 13th, 2020.
Motion made in second. Any questions, deletions, or additions, or comments? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 8 is the approval of warrants. Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President, I can't get it on my screen for a second. Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number 8 of 2020 totaling $2,741,581.86, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for July 23rd of 2020 in the amount of $620,341... Sorry. General sewer fund payroll for August 6, 2020 in the amount of $602,619.90. General fund disbursements, number 8 of 2020 in the amount of $1,226,578.86. Sewer fund disbursement, number 8 of 2020 in the amount of $106,542.1. Community development block grant fund dispersment, number 8 of 2020 in the amount of $64,557.91. Capital projects fund dispersment, number 8 of 2020 in the amount of $98,234.78. Pennsylvania Office of Unemployment Compensation Benefits, 2nd quarter 2020 in the amount of $16,573.04. A credit card statement ending July 27th, 2020 in the amount of $6,134.13.
Second. Motion made in second.
Any questions? President, any questions raised by our auditor were answered to his satisfaction. He has no concerns with the warrants, or do I? I recommend we approve them.
Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item number 9, Finance Department 457B Deferred Compensation Plan.
Mr. President? Move we adopt amendments to Section 457B of our Deferred Compensation Plan for voluntary employee retirement savings.
Motion made. Second by Mr. Aliva. We did discuss this last week at the work session. This is a voluntary plan for allowing Police Department personnel to participate in the other plans for a fee. It doesn't cost us, it's voluntary, and it's just an open air. It's a good thing for all those police officers, and to be able to take post-tax money as well as saving for taxes. So any questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 10 is the approval of the 2021 Budget Adoption Schedule.
Mr. President?
Yes.
President, I move that we adopt the 2020 budget schedule.
21.
2021 budget adoption schedule.
Second. Any questions? Galen, please call a roll.
Well, let me just say that the schedule out loud, just so the public hears it. We will, the manager will present the budget to us on or before October 31st, 2020. We will hold a special budget meeting. As you recall, it's the sole item on that budget, on that agenda, is our budget. It'll be Monday, November 16th of 2020 at 7:00 p.m. At that, we will discuss the budget and hopefully pass preliminarily a first one. The second and final presentation, adoption of the 2021 budget, will be at our regularly scheduled public meeting on Monday, December 14th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m.
Any other comments? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 11, Ordinance Number P172020.
Mr. President, I'd like to make motion to adopt the second reading of Ordinance Number P172020 authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Establish special purpose parking in front of 436 Brookline Boulevard and in front of 23 West Wilmont Avenue, and rescind highway, I'm sorry, rescind highway close to certain vehicles, from Manoa Road to the upper Darby Township Line.
Second. Motion made in second. Again, it's the second reading. Any questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 12, Ordinance P182020.
Mr. President?
Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following reading of Ordinance Number P182020 authorizing and/or rescinding traffic restrictions on the following highway. Sticker parking only, rescind Park Road, South Side between Darby Road and Lansdowne Road.
Second.
Motion made in second. You can pick who got the second there. If you'd like, Mr. Berman. Any questions on this first reading? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 13.
Mr. President?
Mr. Siegel?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2184-2020 approving the Parks and Recreation Department to file a grant application in the amount of $25,000 to the Department of Community and Economic Development for improvements in the Dog Park at Haverford Reserve and the District Mayor Brian Barrett, Director of Parks and Recreation, to execute all documents and agreements.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on this? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 14, Resolution 2185-2020. Dr. Hart?
Motion to authorize the Township of Haverford to file an H2O PA Water Supply, Sanitary Sewer, and Stormwater Project Grant in the amount of $3,318,655 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Chatham-Glen infrastructure improvements and to authorize David R. Berman, Township Manager, and Amy M. Cutherson, Assistant Finance Director, to execute all documents and agreement.
Second.
Motion made in second. We'll promote Ms. Cutherson to finance director from assistant. You would strike that? Is that okay to make that change, Dr.?
Assistant Township Manager.
Should be Township Manager and Finance Director, so we'll make sure that that's posted in the U.
Will you just talk about this for a second?
Got to vote it.
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
Will you just talk about this for a second, what it's going to do for that neighborhood? And Dave, maybe give an update? What is that actually going to do? So, because it's been a problem in Jerry's Ward for quite some time.
So the board may remember, in December of last year, we submitted what was called an H2O Flood Control Grant to the state of Pennsylvania. The grant was to install a large diameter pipe essentially from Tatchip Line Road up through the neighborhood below Chatham Glen. That neighborhood floods at times, and I don't believe it happened, I don't believe it happened last week, Glen actually fills up and overflows. But even if Glen doesn't overflow, water comes out of the street. We got basement flooding, we got garage flooding. This would capture that water, pipe it, and pipe it through the neighborhood. Large diameter pipe, big box culvert in the back of people's properties.
So sanitary sewer lines is going to be much bigger than what?
Oh, no. Nothing to do with sanitary. 100% storm sewer.
This is just a different.
This is a larger storm sewer pipe than their, essentially, we're doubling the size of the storm sewer that goes through that neighborhood. Storm sewer can pick up a 25 to 50-year storm. This would double in size, accommodate 100-plus years.
So I guess my question is, can this be used in other areas, other neighborhoods that have significant flooding?
We've, this particular one started with the H2O Flood Control. That is the Winfield Drive Grant that we got eight, 10 years ago? Eh, I lose track. But when we reconstructed the channel back there and reconstructed the walls, so absolutely, Steve, we've gone very aggressively. The H2O one for the Flood Control, Winfield's biggest grant we ever got, that was over a million.
We could continue to look for?
We're constantly looking. Dave knows, Amy knows, because he always makes sure they're good choices. And then we did this one. We actually submitted a second one in the same area to do a subsurface facility in the Glen itself. And it's also similar to what we did up at Chatham Elementary School, where we put a subsurface facility in. So Steve, we get very aggressive with the stormwater grants and the small water and sewer.
No, I understand. I don't mean to lament, but I think that it's happening more and more throughout this township, and we really need to be aggressive in looking at what neighborhoods that are starting to flood now that never flooded before.
Yep. And sanitary. This board just awarded a contract last month for a small sanitary sewer project that we're doing on a grant to fix and repair sanitary sewers in different spots throughout the township.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Siegel?
Does this require a financial contribution or commitment from the township, or is it solely a funded grant?
No, I believe that we have to match this to a third.
It's 1/3.
How much?
It's a 30% match on a total project cost of roughly $5 million.
It's a 30% match on a total project cost of roughly $5 million. So the township match, if we were fortunate enough to get this grant, would be about $1.6 million over about three, four, maybe five years, it depends how long the project takes from inception through construction.
How many houses or residents or properties is this going to help abate this problem? Is it, I'm trying to get the scope of this.
Entire neighborhood.
It's the entire neighborhood. There's probably 12 to 15 houses that flood on a regular basis. It also, I think, would help somewhat with some of the flooding upstream that we get if more water can...
Up to Foster.
Right. So some of the houses that were on Twin Oaks that, tonight, that had flooding the other day, if more water can come into that pipe, they're going to get less flooding. So it's, it's throughout that whole, whole area.
Yeah, and, you know, just to add, Jerry, everything from Brookline Boulevard coming down goes through that pipe.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of water coming down, so when we have an issue up here, having more, more room down where you are is important.
Mr. Penoni, are we, can we get his perspective on what properties? I respect my colleagues, but I want to hear the engineer's take on this. A lot of money for us, too, that we haven't budgeted at this point.
Well, it's, Dr. Hart's right, if you can, if you can picture the neighborhood, if you can picture where Chatham-Glen is, the Glen, the park, everything, that park's actually overflowed. So think about water, surface water running from the Glen and, and, geez, up and to the left, which is Foster and...
Foster, Juniper, Meadowbrook and...
So, I'm sorry, yeah, so you get, you get about, you get about, on a given day, you get 12, 15 properties. I didn't count what came from this one. It's basements, but we haven't seen first floors yet. Don't forget, we did take one property down a couple of years ago. We took the one on Spring down via grant. We've aggressively tried to get another one off of Foster to replace with open space. We've made multiple attempts to get the FEMA grants through here, too, which would not have the matches, and we were not successful with the FEMAs.
This has been a big, I know before you, Jerry, I mean, going back to Commissioner Broido and even before, this spot has been a big issue. It floods a lot over in the Chatham-Glen area. All those, all those houses over there, Juniper and all those houses get water. It's surprising that they didn't have any damage in the storm. That's shocking.
We get four in Juniper that, we get it almost every single time. We get five, six on Meadowbrook.
Juniper did, they did, the houses, right.
We get videos of that or the non-happy.
Yeah, there, on Juniper, there's two things that happen. When the, with this flood, the houses to the left of the Glen, as you go up Juniper flooded, because they get the backup from the storm grain. When it, it almost came across the burn, I was there today, when that happens, then the houses on both sides get it. But then it's also then the whole neighborhood, Foster floods, and then at the very end, I mean, we did, we heard tonight on Spring Road, and then I heard from multiple residents on Meadowbrook, they had water, a good bit of water.
So Dan, did you ask how many residents or how many homes would that entail?
That's my, that was my question originally.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, Dan, I could actually go back to the old FEMA grant, which, which was very finite on each home, and, and, and look that up. But it's, it's in that neighborhood, it's in that 10, 12, 15 neighborhood. Again, we aggressively took the damages back in those FEMA grants and quantified it dollar-wise. I do not have that exact number off the top of my head, but that's, that's the order magnitude. I hope.
Any other questions? Please call or roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 15, legal motion.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Siegel.
Motion to authorize the solicitor to file a petition for alocotter with the Pennsylvania Supreme Court in the matter of Barabow versus Haverford Township and Haverford Township Zoning Hearing Board.
Second. Motion made in second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions on this? Please call or roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Next item is motion authorized... Go ahead, Mr. Siegel.
Motion to authorize the township manager to enter into a renewal with the mainline air roof corporation of the contract entered into on August 14, 1995.
Motion made in second by Mr. Aliva. Any questions?
Could you tell, I don't, I don't know what this contract...
Mr. Siegel?
I couldn't hear what was said.
Can you explain this?
Could you explain that in further detail, please?
Or Dr. Hart?
Um, I had, an air roof is essentially an area or a region in a community that is enclosed by a wire boundary. It extends symbolically the private areas of Jewish homes into public areas, thereby permitting observant Jews to undertake activities that they normally would only be allowed to undertake within their homes, and they could do it publicly within the area. Apparently, our prior contract with the air roof corporation, which actually is primarily in Lower Marion, was in 1995 and is up for renewal. It's the boundary, the wire boundary is literally a wire, a fishing wire, that's attached to electric wires that without that in place, observant Jews who are prohibited from performing various activities outside the home couldn't do it and couldn't even walk to their services on the Sabbath.
Thank you for that explanation. Please call or roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 16, contract awards. First one is professional services.
Mr. President? Motion to approve a contract for professional services buying between the township of Haverford, a local subdivision of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and Penoni Associates, wherein after referred to as the engineer, for a maximum compensation up to $50,000 for the years 2019 and 2020, CDBG Project, Haverford Road Busway Crossing.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on this professional services contract? The minister there receiving each variety. Please call or roll.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Public Works contract.
Mr. President, make a motion to award the 2020, 2021 salt contract to Eastern Salt Company an amount of $50.35 per ton, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions?
Just a question, what did we pay last year, and how much do we have? Didn't use a lot last year, I assume, so we must have a lot of excess.
We didn't use much last year. We, we, last year's contract was $53 a ton, so this is less expensive, and I'm not sure how much is on hand, and Mr. Mariotti is on vacation, so I can get that information to you.
We can buy what we need, obviously, not...
It's a, it's a quantity. It's an open quantity. The estimate is based on an open quantity.
Great. Thank you. Please call or roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
This on the salt contract?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Harvard Road Improvement.
I would like to make a note, while motion to award the Harvard Road Subdivision compensation of the public and district contracts from Brooklyn in the amount of $91,400, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on this? I think we discussed this last week.
I'd just like to thank everybody for their hard work that's been going on for years, and good to see this done.
It's good to see this being completed. Please call or roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Basketball and tennis court improvement.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to award basketball tennis court rehabilitation improvement contract to Gessler Construction Media PA in the amount of $217,500 base bid plus alternate number two, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second. Motion made in second by Dr. Hart. Any questions? Please call or roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. That concludes our... Item 17 is continuation of citizens' form for non-agenda items. Mr. Berman, have you received any emails from the public during that?
I don't have anything further for the public comment.
Number 18 is new business. New business.
Can we discuss the flooding issue now?
Yes.
Dave?
New business is actually, it's not other business.
I think we wanted to take, we wanted a resolution to adopt the, yeah, what I was... Declaration of emergency.
Sorry, forgot.
Yeah, that's all right. What I was going to recommend, Mr. President, is that we, is that the board adopt orally a resolution, and then it be memorialized in writing to reflect what we said, but it's to authorize Mr. Berman to take all steps necessary on behalf of the township to declare state of emergency for those neighborhoods that were affected by the flood, take any other steps necessary to gather data, accumulate data for purposes of providing it to the county or state or federal authorities, and take any steps necessary to open avenues for monetary relief, either for the township or for residents thereof directly affected by the flood.
Second.
Motion made in second.
Actually, we're premature first. Can I move that we add that to the agenda and consider...
Yes.
Consider a resolution doing what I just said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And in light of the emergency nature and the fact that we're doing things by Zoom, do we need the, do we need some word from the solicitor that we can take this step without being able to accept any public comment on it since it wasn't on the agenda? Thank you. So I then repeat my resolution.
Motion made in second. All in favor of adopting this resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Berman, please take the appropriate actions, and we'll get it coordinated. Any other new business?
Mr. President, just, it's not new business, I just, we skipped over update on the library, and I think the update on the library was just that we were going to move forward next month, pick up where we were in March, or, and...
That's correct. We'll discuss it at the work session and then vote on it in the September meeting. Okay. Okay. Other business. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank all the emergency services township employees, public works for their effort during this storm, especially our volunteer firefighters, all five fire companies, and they're all volunteers, and they're such a jewel for this township. Manoa, last year, purchased a boat because of the amount of rain that, and flooding that we've had in the last couple of years, and some people were skeptical about whether we really needed it. Well, guess what? We needed it because they rescued about 16 kids, a month-old baby, and about 10 adults, and it was just an amazing effort by volunteers. So thank God that they had that, and that boat. It's actually been requested, I think, for some rescue by Chester. Did you hear that?
I did not.
So I think, one of the things I want to discuss, and if Dave can come up, and I think that, you know, I remember when I first started as a commissioner, it's 17 years now, and we had 100-year storm. We seemed to be having them just about every other month sometime, and just about every year, to be realistic. So the question is, I mean, we really, I know we take it seriously, but we really, really need to find, we have to have some sort of comprehensive plan on how we're dealing with this, and why are so many communities now underwater? Call it climate change, call it what you want, but last week, I talked about Windsor Park, which never used to flood. It did it again in this storm, and I know you were going to look at that. I don't know if you had a chance to do that, but this is what I'm talking about. We need to take a look at these areas that have never flooded, never had, almost like rivers going down their streets, and now that's happening. And if we don't take some sort of action to mitigate that, or to make some changes, we're going to lose residents, and residents are going to have to be dealing with this. It's because the way I look at it is, it's only going to get worse. If this is climate change, then it's only going to get worse. Sea levels are rising, coastal temperatures are getting warm, I get that, but what can we do to stop this from happening or make changes? And how does the, I mean, both systems are separate, your sanitary and your sewer systems. So how, some people are asking me, and of course, I'm an engineer, so how does the sewer get into the sanitary system?
So the first question's a lot harder to answer. I mean, how do we stop, how do we stop the heavy rains from coming? How do we mitigate the damage?
Well, the places where they never flooded before are now flooding.
And what we do is we, whether it was 20 years ago, or 30 years ago, or now, we will go and look at them. We'll look at them, we'll look at them empirically, like what we'll do at Windsor is we'll see if we have what we call inlet capacity and storm sewer capacity. We'll look to establish or determine what's needed to increase that capacity. If it's inadequate capacity, sometimes, Steve, it's a maintenance issue. Sometimes, unfortunately, inlets clog, pipes clog. So we look at each situation, especially new ones, and try to ascertain, why did that flooding occur? What happened with the flooding? What rain event will it repeat itself at, and what can we do to help to mitigate it? And then, then that's, that's step one. Step two is then to execute, and we certainly don't execute anything without coming to the board. So that's, that's, that's very methodical, and we've always done that, and that's a good engineering, methodical approach. Dave's already, Dave's already given us a half a dozen lists of what I'll call newer stuff, like the Windsor, that we'll look at. We've got this, the historic stuff, the stuff we always see, the Winfield Drives, the Chatham-Glen areas, Mill Road, so we know all them. So there, that's a, that's actually good, that's a good question. So the new stuff, we would look at very methodically and very, very scientifically and determine what happened, why did it happen, and what could we do to mitigate it.
Should be looking at Virginia and Maryland and those areas to figure out.
Yep, absolutely. I'm telling you, we already got a half a dozen items on this, even the wall in Carrickon. I mean, it's private property, but was there any anomaly that caused that wall to collapse, and then the bank to fail? The sanitary is...
Can I just add something? I don't want to be a pessimist, but, I mean, can we really, realistically create infrastructure to deal with eight and a half inches of rain in a 24-hour period?
Well, that's, that's a great question.
I mean, realistically, I don't want people to think that we can solve, solve the problem in every instance, but I think there are certain situations where you just, it's prohibitively expensive for, and sometimes, more often than not, even if you spent unlimited amounts of money, you're still not going to solve the problem. All you're going to do is move water faster from one problem area to another. So I just, I just, I think we have to be, I agree with Commissioner, be as aggressive as we can be, but also be realistic about what we can't.
And you need to understand that, but Windsor Park, they flooded in storms...
Well, we had the same thing on a number of streets.
Before this storm.
Eight and a half inches of rain.
No, 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 I'm not talking about this storm.
I've never had six inches of water in my basement. I've been there 23 years, I've never had six inches of water in my basement before.
Right.
Six inches of water in my basement.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about this storm.
Okay.
For Windsor Park, not this storm. It's been flooding every time it rains.
I'm referring to any storm.
But I understand what you're saying, and I agree, but we should still look at this and see where we can mitigate.
I did not disagree with you. I'm just saying we have to be realistic also about...
I get it.
You don't have people's expectations be...
Oh, I'm not trying to do that.
We don't know if we can fix it yet. What's that?
I said, the expectation that we can fix it when we don't know if we could or can.
Yeah, we don't really know. We should try. I'm not saying we shouldn't.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I'm not saying that we have a magic wand and we're going to fix these issues and everybody's not going to flood anymore, but I think that... I mean, the good point is, okay, it was eight inches of rain in a 24-hour period. It definitely was, but...
Probably shorter than that, wasn't it? It wasn't?
It was longer than that.
But three and a half...
We can handle eight inches of rain in 24 hours. We've seen it.
I think it's a much shorter period.
Yeah.
The duration, the duration was...
Yeah, it's not...
Too empirical, but yeah.
We have an extraordinary amount of capacity, and last year... Last year was not a hundred-year storm. Last year, we had a flood in Winfield because the inlets were blocked, because we had the combination of a huge weekend cleanup of all sorts of yard waste that never got picked up, and all of it went into the inlets and blocked all the inlets. That flood came from the street, like, you're not from the creek.
The creek didn't jump its banks last year.
Didn't jump its banks last year, and it handled a significant four or five inches of rain in a short amount of time. But this was... This time was overwhelming. There are some things we can do. I asked Mr. Panoni, I raised Mr. Panoni and Mr. Berman, in the areas where we have natural flood plains that could absorb them, I think we could think... We should think about some topographical changes we can make that may increase the capacity of some of the places where we can have overflow water. The obvious one is Merwood Park. Merwood Park did its job on Tuesday and probably held three-quarters of a million gallons of water during the height of that storm, but it eventually overcame the berm, went down the sidewalk, and it contributed to the flood in Winfield. Any place where we have that ability to take advantage of the natural buffers we have for purposes of flood management, we ought to examine it. We really ought to concentrate our efforts on that. Right? Doubling pipes down into an area that doesn't have the capacity to take double pipes, you know, it could be a problem. Trying to make the channel in Winfield wider, only to have it narrow at Carrickon because it could cause a catastrophe.
Or narrow to go root.
Hundred yards down isn't helpful. So there are some things we should consider, and everybody also needs to remember, any new development that we do in our township, we don't have a lot of undeveloped property, but we have undeveloped property. Any new development has to come up with a stormwater management plan that is better than what it's taking the place of. So we do over a long time.
Is that required by law?
That's required by our ordinance. That's, if you guys remember, about 10, 12 years ago, we adopted a new stormwater management that does exactly what Mr. Holmes says. It goes back and tries to fix some of the lack of regulation, 56... You know, my house was built 50s, 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s, and it captures the water and tries to help mitigate it. So one project at a time, one property at a time. Look, most of you guys have gotten a complaint from somebody about the owner, how ornery the ordinance can be.
Yeah, and the perfect example, I mean, that's private development, but for like, I mean, Haverford College is a perfect example. Instructing, I mean, they took up a lot of their grass surface installing their... I don't know whether it was one of the recreation buildings, it was a gym, but part of that construction project required a huge water retention basin that holds up to a million gallons and then lets it out over day.
What we call rate reduction. So now, today's ordinance actually requires you reduce the rate of runoff, where the previous ordinance required you at least still make it any increase at any.
Right.
And also, today's ordinance also requires you capture the first inch of runoff and put it underground and hold it, if you can. I mean, there's some sites where you can't do that, but if you can, you capture it and put it underground. The quarry does it, for example. We've done, even if you think as far back as the late 70s, on, in our country called, there's five little basins that were constructed in the 70s to help mitigate the flooding down in the quarry area. So we always look, to your question, Steve, when problems pop up, we look at what could be done to possibly help to mitigate the situation. That's a 1970s... That was a 70s concept.
So I have a question.
Sure.
And a statement. So I'll start with my question. So the new development, the contractor that's working in my... That's building two homes and making the other one. What's his stormwater?
His stormwater has to... He has to meet today's ordinance, which requires what we call rate reduction. So the rate of the water that leaves his property will be less tomorrow than it is today, and he also has to capture a certain volume of water, put that underground so it never leaves the site.
I added that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And that's our task. The ordinance was written... It's a county-based ordinance. It's what we call watershed-based ordinance. There's an Act 167 study done years ago. We then, we and most of Delaware County, adopted that ordinance. Laurie and I worked on it in some great detail. We tweaked it a little bit for some local, but in whole, we basically adopted the 167 ordinance, and that's where you're, again, where you're... The intent is to try to make up for some of the items that were missed in the past developments.
Right, so my statement is, I mean, my ward and Mario's ward, that creek there never overflowed its banks. It got high. It got as high as the wall.
The... Which creek are you talking about?
The right behind your...
The channel that comes down from...
The channel, not a creek, whatever you call it.
The channel that comes back through...
Naylor's Run? Down Naylor's Run?
Yeah, down Naylor's Run. Ends up in Naylor's Run, which, as you know, I mean, Dave was down there with me. A tree came down and got stuck in the channel right there, and Public Works had to come out in the height of the storm and get that tree out of there. Huge tree, but what had happened was, it blocked the one side of it. It got stuck on the bridge and blocked the one side, and the one side was filling up, and Naylor's Run was getting flooded. I mean, I was up to my waist in water over there.
That's the debris problems that we can have.
Yeah, and then when it went down, it went right down. The channel went right down, and all the water went back into it.
It's been a while since it's been...
Then it backed up all the way to where Virginia, over there? It backed up?
No, it didn't back up. Well, that particular tree didn't cause the problem.
Major backup. Because it got high. It got high.
You're way downstream. It would flood, you know, Naylor's Run would be flooded before... Naylor's Run's at the bottom.
Some of the neighbors of that street are concerned because some of the yard is in actually Mario's ward, but it's really my ward. But their property is being eroded away from that.
Stream erosion, streambank erosion.
The township had built walls there, apparently. I didn't...
Well, typically, on private property, the township does not build any walls for streambank issues. It's private property. The waters are regulated by the state.
I'm just telling you what they told me. I don't know.
Sometimes a builder builds them. Once in a while, with CDBG monies, we will do a streambank erosion project, but in the decades I've been here, we've never used township monies on...
Down at Naylor's Run, that channel was built by the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, the one behind Winfield Drive, definitely, and I'm pretty sure the one you're talking... The one that goes into the old LA Fitness, right?
Yeah.
About, yep, yep.
Yeah, the one that comes underground that goes into the quarry.
Yeah, we think that was... If I remember right, that was Army Corps. I don't remember. It's been a while since I looked at that one.
We went through that when they rebuilt the channel, when it collapsed and took that almost garage out.
And when LA Fitness came in, we looked at some modifications on their property.
So will you look at all this and give us a comprehensive report?
Yep. And again, we do that all the time, even if it's just an outlier anomaly. We look at why.
Whatever it is.
Sometimes a solution can be relatively straightforward. We need additional inlet capacity, I get the water in the pipes. Sometimes it's real complicated where it's very difficult to mitigate, but we always look at them and see if there's something that can be done to mitigate.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. D'Amelio?
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Aliva?
I'd like to thank Public Works, all the emergency services. We had, you know, everybody out on this, on Tuesday with this storm. As I said before, Public Works came down in the height of the storm with the backhoe through that tree out of that channel, and it was a massive tree that had come down at the park and came down and blocked the channel. Without that, without bringing the backhoe and getting that out of there, those houses on Naylor's Run and on the 400 block of West Langford would have flooded. We have had issues with that channel flooding before the quarry was built, before the quarry center was built and they opened the channel on the other side. We had many floods there and houses were... Houses and cars and everything were underwater. So Public Works did a great service over there, helping us to clear that and get the everything... All the drains cleared out there after the storm, all the... After the channel cleared, all the debris went into the grate, so we had to clean, constantly clean the grates to get the water to go down. But it finally did, and a lot of people, you know, were saved over in that area. A lot of money would have been spent to fix that sort of stuff. So I appreciate Public Works. I thank them a lot for all the guys who came out and, you know, our police, the fire rescues, all the stuff that was going on. There was so much going on on that day, so I just wanted to say thank you, everyone. That's all I have.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what many of my colleagues have said and expressed sympathy to those that were affected by the storm last week. You know, as Mr. Berman mentioned in his comments, we're talking about this from the very macro level, looking at numbers and looking at things that we can do in terms of stormwater sewers, sanitation sewers. But when water gets in your basement or if you have an issue with flooding, as they unfortunately did on Winfield Drive, you know, that's a deeply personal thing for people to go through at their homes. So my heart goes out to all of them, and, you know, as some of my fellow commissioners said, we'll certainly be as aggressive as possible to keep working on our stormwater management and, you know, do everything the township is capable to do. Also, just a reminder, you know, I know we had the storm last week, and I know, you know, we're sort of getting used to this, but please, everyone wear their masks. I know in Haverford here, our school district voted last week, and it will start 100% virtual. You know, I know, myself included, there's a lot of parents that are going to be struggling how to figure this out for the fall, for, you know, an institution of school that has been around since, basically, America started. So, you know, we, as a community, need to realize that I don't know if there's anything else that needs to happen to be canceled for people who don't... Aren't taking it seriously, but until we all work together and until we all, you know, try to be socially responsible and wear our masks and everything like that, we're... That's the only way we're going to get back to any sort of normalcy. So please wear your mask and enjoy the rest of your summer. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Siegel?
I don't know if you can hear me because my connection has been lost, I think.
You sound good.
You can?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Other than to echo what Commissioner McCluskey said, please, wear your masks, understand that the situation can only get better if we all cooperate. You have kids going to school, and make sure that they're healthy, and just be very careful because the sooner we all work together, you know, as Dr. Wary informed us last week, the better we'll be. Thank you. And one, and just the other is to the residents, we know how difficult the last few weeks have been and the storms and everything, and we are working. It is not easy. It is stressful for everyone, whether it's the township, the commissioners, and certainly the people living it, but we are trying, you know, just listening to the meeting tonight and you hear what everyone is saying, you know, our goal is to improve the situation, whether it's water, it's PICO, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lewis?
I think my colleagues adequately covered the comments I was going to make, so I have nothing additional to add.
Commissioner Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. President. There are just a couple of people I do want to specifically highlight. When the rain first started falling about four o'clock in the morning, our Public Works Director went down to Winfield to check out how the creek was handling the capacity, and was out again at 7:30 in the morning when I was there to see how that was going as well. He and his staff and Mr. Berman, a lot of our police and our fire departments all responded very quickly to what was a real emergency on Winfield Drive. And in fact, we were able to take advantage of the Manoa Rescue Boat to get some people out of houses that had become... That it was far too dangerous and treacherous for these folks to cross the road with several feet of running water in it at the time. The township, since that time, has really stepped up. A number of township employees worked on Saturday with six trucks, also coordinated by Mr. Mariani and Mr. Berman, to help pick up a lot of the debris from the flood in the driveway behind the Winfield Drive homes, as well as from the street. And that effort is going to continue, including arranging for the removal of bulk items such as washers, dryers, hot water heaters, and even some furnaces that were destroyed in the flood. The residents themselves have been... Have handled this very well. They were very gracious on Saturday at providing doughnuts and coffee and, in some situations, even gift cards. I hope nobody gets in trouble for accepting those, Mr. Berman. Let's just have amnesty on that, but from very grateful and gracious residents, appreciated the work, the extra work that people were putting in. I plan a meeting with the Winfield Drive and surrounding area residents here. I'll work out a schedule, but the goal is to do it maybe sometime next week with our township manager, our Public Works Director, our engineer, and myself, and anybody from there to talk about whether or not we can come up with some ideas that may be helpful there. Thing I mentioned about Merwood Park is something that would particularly benefit that area and anybody downstream from it. But as difficult as this will be to hear for anybody who did suffer, you know, significant property losses in the flood, it could have been much worse on Tuesday, but for some efforts that were undertaken in the last couple of years, the creek wall repair, the work last year to dig out the inlets, and the work in the 48 hours before the flood to warn all the residents that we thought it was coming, both the residents and township employees cleaned out all the inlets, and every resident moved every car up that street. So unlike last year where we lost a half dozen, maybe a dozen cars to flood, I'm not aware of one single car being destroyed in the flood this year. So those are the kind of advanced steps, and that happened in part because a letter was delivered by our emergency responders to the residents the day before the anticipated bad weather, and people responded smartly and swiftly. So I just want to thank everybody involved in that process and assure our residents, as all of my colleagues have, that we take this very seriously and we will do what is in our power to try to make it better and certainly take every official step we can act, that we can do to open up avenues for relief for you, financial relief and otherwise. So that, wear masks, good luck at school, everybody, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Quinn?
I just have two quick things, so I'd like to thank everybody that worked so hard. Last week, the storm, the amount of calls, and everything, for everybody who had to deal with what they had to deal with. And the other thing is, for speed, there seems to be lots of speeding around. I've been seeing it on my block, on my road, too. When everybody goes up to play a penalty park, they fly above the street. They kind of pass, almost had a kid hit about a week or two ago, and everybody's been coming to me, they're trying to find ways that we can stop that on... Maybe they'll talk to the basements and see what we can do to stop that. Plus and less, not just there, but around the town. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner? Dr. Hart?
Yes, I wanted to thank my fellow commissioners. I thank the fellow commissioners for supporting township funds for the stormwater grant. I do want residents to understand that the grant has not been approved, that we are along the way, and we've sort of stayed as tall as they like the grant, but there are still a limited number of grants going to be released. If we don't get this grant, there are other grants that we have also in the works. We're still trying to see if we can get a retention basin for Chatham-Glen. As we've mentioned, a lot of other things need to be done. One of the things to keep in mind is that trees help prevent erosion. The ordinance that was... For the shade tree, revised shade tree ordinance that originally was going to be voted on tonight, would have helped save trees and help with the erosion problem, so hopefully we'll be back next month with that ordinance. And then finally, I wanted to thank Brian Barrett, Jason O'Brien, and employees of the Parks Department, they who beautifully restored two stone pillars at the entrance to Cadwalder Park. at the entrance to Cadwalder Park. The pillars were initially put up in 1907 when it was the, an entrance to the new Penfield and Brooklyn neighborhoods, and eventually we want to try to get a historical marker up to explain the importance of that. And that's all I have. Again, thanks to all our employees at Public Works and Police Fire.
And thank you all for those comments. I think our police, fire, EMS, all did outstanding jobs, and goes without saying that they're led by Mr. Berman and the rest of the staff, that they've all done an admirable job of leadership in getting all those. As Commissioner D'Amelio pointed out, Manoa Fire Company, we now have a water rescue boat in the township with there. They have five people that have gone through hours and hours of training. It takes about four weeks to get through that training. They have done it, and there are several other members that are going through there. As he put it out, they were called, they were needed in another area, but we were already on call in Newtown Square that night, so another, another unit had to take that. So I thank all the township, Mr. Berman, Amy, as the manager and assistant manager. Thank you for your leadership, and to all the department's chief, and all the fire departments that are here. You, Mr. Chief McCann, same with you, and you guys. They did outstanding job all across the board, but, you know, it starts from the lowest guy there. Everybody has a job. They're all doing it, and good leadership gets it all done. With that, we are adjourned.